The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our regular meeting of the Waburn City Council held in the council chambers at 6:00 PM Monday, May 9th, 2022. The first thing on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting and strategic planning and priorities meeting held April 25th, 2022. Just before we do that, I would just like to say that Council Richards and Council Jenke are not present here tonight, but we still have a quorum and we are still moving ahead. Approval of the minutes?
Your worship, I'll make that motion.
I'll second that, your worship. Called a question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Additions to the agenda?
Yeah, your worship, no additions tonight from administration.
Council? Nothing tonight. There's no public hearings and notices. Tonight, under delegations, proclamations, and petitions, we, the first delegation, is Mr. Byrd, Craig Byrd, with the delegation of the Southeast Military Museum banners. If you would, please step forward, Mr. Byrd.
Your worship, ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate you taking the... Oh, sorry. I appreciate you taking the time to hear me. As you had heard, my name is Craig Byrd. I am the president and curator of the Southeast Military Museum, based out of Estevan. Last year, I presented council with a letter basically outlining a banner initiative that we have got started in the southeast as of Remembrance Day last year. I believe, just with the content of my letter and not being able to address council, there may have been a little bit of confusion with regards to the information that I provided. So I'm here tonight to basically clear up any information or misgivings that the city may have and to answer questions with regards to the banner program that we started here in Waburn last year and would like to expand. I also brought members of the Waburn Legion here as well, as I have done a presentation with the Legion, so that they're aware of everything that's going on with the museum. So basically, the way the letter came out last year was we didn't require any support from the city other than we would like, wanted to get your permission, basically, to hang up veterans' banners along the major thoroughfares in Waburn. Now, the banners were not limited to people that had died from the Waburn area during wartime. It was open to anybody that had served from this area. Now, each of the towns that we have going are doing similar things. So it's people that live here now and have family from anywhere that served in the military or with the police. And I got a nice reply letter back from council, just basically saying, "Come back and talk to you guys this year with regards to the banner program." So we want to expand the banner program. We had seven communities onboard last year: Estevan, Mydale, Lampman, Stoughton, Carlisle, Redverse, and Waburn, being the seventh. And we had tremendous outreach from the public in regards to this. I think it's important to honor our veterans, all of the ones that perished during wartime, but as well as the people that continue to serve. You have a lot of people in your community that served during the peacetime with the Canadian forces, and nobody knows who they are in the community. You have lots of people, we commemorate them on our Senataph. You have a Senataph just outside your building that commemorates all of the people from the local area that were killed during wartime. But we also have a bunch of people that have come back to the communities, served on city council, ran businesses here in Waburn, farmed, built these communities up to where they are today, and they get very little recognition, if at all. Plus, all our World War II veterans are pretty much gone. You know, there may be a scattered one or two around here, and we're getting to the point where that generation's losing that information because it was their grandparents or great-grandparents that had served, and that information's being, you know, stored away and nobody knows. They can't put a face to that family heritage. So the goal of our museum was basically to keep those memories alive, to archive that information, so that it doesn't get lost. And part of the, I guess, the selfish reason I'm doing the banner program is we're getting a lot of that information from the families of these veterans, as well as photographs and other information, so that we can commemorate them from the area. And if the families need some help, we also provide a service where we look up service records for all of these families on their loved ones, so that they have some of that information and they can pass it on to other generations. So we had requested last year to get the program going, to hang the banners up on the main streets. We found that there was a little bit of resistance here because I think, like I said, there was a misunderstanding with what we were asking. We did end up getting some assistance from the fire department to put up. We put up six brackets here in town, and we had four banners put up last year. A city this size, same size as Estevan, Estevan had the same result last year. We had 22 banners up in Estevan. And there's no reason why we shouldn't have at least that many, if not more, for Waburn. And again, because of supply issues, COVID and whatnot, you know, we got the program running. We were happy with the start, but we would like to expand it. COVID's kind of winding down now, where we can get things going a little bit better with the supply issues and whatnot. So we would like to expand the program here in town and also request your sponsorship for this program to help us out. Each of the towns and communities that I approached last year were interested in doing the program, but they were also asked if they wanted to help out. And what the help would look like, I guess, with the banner program, is the banner brackets. The bracketing system that we have has been approved by SAS Power. There was an email that I sent to the city manager that had that information. I also have copies of it here, if you would like. Basically, I want to expand the program to put more banners up with the help of the Legion, and some members of the Legion here, we're going to put up more banners. The more brackets that I have, the more banners that I can put up. Members of the military family can purchase brackets as well, but if the city can help out in any way, it would be greatly appreciated. It just gives us more flexibility. The brackets that are purchased by the city stay in the city. They get mounted on city light poles, and they stay here. The deals that I have made with other municipalities was, we would like to use them from the end of August to, basically, after Remembrance Day, when the city swaps out those banners and puts up their Christmas decorations. And if the city wants to use those brackets for their own purposes, such as grads, people going to provincial sporting events, that sort of thing, the city can use those banners in the off time. So the brackets stay in the city, they can be utilized by the city if they want to as well. So everything that we do stays in the community and helps out the community as well, if we so choose. So what I'm asking, I guess, is, at the end of the day, if the city would be interested in sponsoring 10 brackets. The brackets are $300 each. They're a high-quality, 10-year guaranteed bracket. They would be mounted on the city light poles on the major intersections and would stay in the city.
Thank you, your worship. Mr. Byrd, thank you so much for taking this on. I think it's a fantastic way to remember all of our veterans. Couple of questions. You mentioned that the brackets will stand up to about 145 km/h wind. What about the banners themselves, and who maintains those, and who comes in and fixes them if one happens to get ripped?
So the banners are basically property of the person that buys them. The museum, we look after, maintain them. So if they get ripped, damaged, we had a couple that were lost in the big windstorm last year out in Carlisle and one out in Stoughton. We, as the museum, absorb that cost and replace them. I do have a sample here as well, if you'd like to see it.
Sure, please.
So this is a sample of the World War I banner. They're double-sided, so there's information and photos, if we have them, on both sides. They're 30 inches by 36 inches, and the way they're designed... Excuse me. The way they're designed is the special brackets that we have are able to flex in the wind, so it puts less stress both on the pole as well as the banner. And as I mentioned, they have a 10-year guarantee, so that they won't... Well, they'll last as long as we can with them. Of course, the elements and everything else, they don't last forever, but, you know, we try to extend that.
They'd be from June till end of November?
No, the end of August, so the beginning of September, to after Remembrance Day. So basically, when the city switches over...
Three months.
Three, four months, yeah.
Mr. Mickle?
Couple of things. First of all, thank you very much for coming to council this evening, a very worthy cause for sure. A couple of things that I would like to see is that, first of all, we pass this on to administration and see if, in fact, it'll work with our power poles and our Christmas lights. And also, because we're dealing with money, the budget is done for this year, as you know, and we have several groups coming in, and we'd like to treat everybody equally when they do appear at council. So I don't think, in my opinion, you'd get an answer tonight, but some research should be done as if it can actually work, and the dollar figure will have to hit the 2023 budget.
So to answer your question in regards to that, because we did this research last year, the power poles and the light poles in town, most of which belong to SAS Power. SAS Power has approved our brackets for the light poles. Because we mounted them last year and had them actually just in front of City Hall and the Legion, they do work with the bracketing that you have for your Christmas decorations, so there's no issue in having both. They just remove the standards that stick out from the poles and leave the actual mounting bracket part, and then they can hook in the Christmas decoration, so there's no conflict there. The budgetary part, I did submit this proposal last year to be looked at for this budget year, and again, I don't know if there was some misunderstanding or miscommunication with the intent with the letter, because it was just a repeat from last year, asking for the same thing and to come to city council to talk about it this year. So that's kind of where that sits. If the city wants to defer that, I don't expect money tonight. I realize with COVID and everything else that money is tight with all of this, but if we push it off to another year, I guess it will be what it is.
Mr. Van Betch?
Yes, thank you very much for coming. I think it's a great initiative, I think, in light of the world situation that we have right now. I think it's very important for the community and everybody in the community to understand what the armed forces mean to Canada and to everybody in the world. And I would like to see us get this, find this money this year and not have to wait for another budget year, as you said. And for one, I would support trying to find money, you know, $3,000 for this initiative to increase the program in Waburn and put more banners up to recognize these people.
Mr. Gordon?
I would echo Councilor Van Betch's sentiments. Thank you very much for coming and making this presentation. It is a monetary issue, and it's very worthwhile for us to look into our situation and find this money to move forward with this project. But again, it's not something that will happen tonight. It's something that we need to look into, but I fully support it.
How many are you... You said 22, but how many are you wanting? Because again, we don't want every power pole on the, you know, through there doing it. I know it's during, leading up to Remembrance Day and afterwards. How many are you expecting in the end, say, three years down the road, four years down the road? What's the wrong range?
Well, it's one of those things that we're going to run this program every year, so I hope to see it expand exponentially through here. We put up four banners in Waburn last year. I would hope to at least double that for this year. And again, it just depends on community outreach. I've been in touch with Tourism Waburn, as well as the Waburn Legion, and they... Both of those organizations support what we're doing with the banners, because it's tourism at the end of the day. People are walking downtown, they see the banners, you know. It just, well, a lot of people know the people that were on the banners, that's the thing. You know, they grew up with them when they were kids, and they see all of this going on, and they can commemorate people that they know or once saw, you know, that have now passed on in the community. So, you know, the more we can get the word out, you know, ideally, I would like to have 100 banners in Waburn. Is that realistic? You know, maybe five, 10 years down the line, but like I say, I would like to at least double that number here in Waburn. I would expect, hopefully this year, we could get at least 10 to 15 banners up, is kind of my goal for this year for Waburn.
Any further questions? Okay, at that point, we'll thank you for your presentation. We'll leave it to you. You have, administration has your phone number, and we'll discuss it, and be in touch with you shortly here.
Thanks for your time, and I appreciate you allowing me to present this to city council.
Okay. Oh, one last question. How much are the banners worth? If you said the family purchased them, how much are the banners?
So we've got three different levels. We have a, the family level is $200 with all the taxes included. We have a corporate level. We've had businesses that have sponsored brackets in front of their businesses, and that's $300. And then, if the families want, they can spend $500 to get a bracket as well as the banner. The brackets, again, stay in the communities where they're purchased, and they can also get a tax receipt for that purchase as well.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you again for your time. The proclamation of the National Public Works Week is what we're doing here. National Public Works Week, May 15th to the 21st, 2022. Ready and resilient. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure facilities and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of people of Waburn. And whereas these infrastructure facilities and services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of the public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for citizens, civic leaders, and children in Waburn to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2022 marks the 62nd Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, be it now, resolved, I, Marcel Roy, Mayor of City of Waburn, do hereby designate the week, May 15th to the 21st, 2022, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the Canadian Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the sustainable contributions they make to protect our national health, safety, and quality of life. While I'm signing here, I will ask Jennifer Wilkinson, do you have anything to say as management of city works?
Yeah, I would just like the opportunity to thank all of our public work staff, you know, especially after what was a very tumultuous winter season and all the hard work and dedication they gave. And they do that around the clock, all the time, ensuring that the citizens of Waburn have essential services, and I think they do a fantastic job and am very proud to be the department head.
Any other comments? I would like to echo the same thing, that we really grant all the appreciation from myself and all of council, that for the hard work they do each and every year, each and every day, for us to maintain so we have fresh water, good streets, good garbage pickup, and all the facilities that we have within our city. So thank you again for that. Moving forward, we have the consent agenda, fire department report, water treatment report, public work support. These will all go onto our city website. Do we have a motion, please?
Yes, your worship, I'm prepared to make a motion that the items on the consent agenda be accepted as presented.
Second.
I'll second that, your worship.
Called a question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Motions, council payable, if you would, please.
Your worship, I'd like to make the motion that the purchases in the amount of $933,415.29 from April 22nd to May 5th, 2022 be passed for payment.
I'll second that, your worship.
Questions? Seeing none, called a question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Special occasion application, Waburn Agricultural Society, city manager.
Thanks, your worship. So upcoming agricultural affairs coming up here from July 7th to 10th. So we've requested from the Waburn Agricultural Society, looking for following times for their event licensing for their beer gardens, for the outdoor event. So we're looking at Thursday, June, July 7th, from 4 until 4:00 PM to 12:00 AM. Friday, July 8th, from 4:00 PM until 2:00 AM. Saturday, July 9th, from 2:00 PM till 2:00 AM. And then on Sunday, the wrap-up day, on July 10th, from noon till 7:00 PM. So they provide all the required information, the requested form, the area of mapping. I believe the police has also seen this as well, so yes, they have seen this information as well. And so administration has no concerns on the request provided by the society.
Do you have a motion, please?
Your worship, I'd like to make that motion, that council support the request of the Waburn Agricultural Society to make the application for an issuance of an outdoor liquor permit by the Saskatchewan Liquor and Gaming Authority for the following dates and times. Thursday, July 7th, 2022, from 4:00 PM to 12:00 AM. Friday, July 8th, 2022, 4:00 PM to 2:00 AM. Saturday, July 9th, 2022, 2:00 PM to 2:00 AM. And Sunday, July 10th, 2022, noon until 7:00 PM.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Questions? Seeing none, called a question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Service body tender. Director?
Yes, good evening. So this is for a service body with a crane for a maintenance truck. So the Fleet Services have an allocated department budget for this purchase in the amount of $100,000, and it would replace unit 98. The new cabin chassis has been ordered from Great Plains Ford for $66,500, including taxes. The purchase and installation of a service body and crane for the chassis would also come from this budget. On April 13th, a tender for the delivery and installation of a service body and crane was posted on SAS Tenders on the city's website. Two bids were received, and they had to be received as of Thursday, April 28th, at 1:00 PM. So the total prices submitted include an aluminum service body with tool chest and a hydraulic crane that matched the specification sheet provided on the bib, bid, sorry. Acceptance of the low bid for the service body and crane will result in approximately $42,000 over the total budget. This overage would be offset by the savings in the capital purchase budget of approximately $69,000 from the wheeled loader that was purchased from Redhead Equipment earlier this year. It is recommended that the service body and crane be awarded to the Truck Outfitters Canada of Regina SAS for $75,579.90.
Do you have a motion, please?
Thanks, Jennifer. Yes, I'm prepared to make a motion that the bid of the Truck Outfitters Canada Incorp to supply a service body and crane in the amount of $75,579.90 be accepted as recommended.
Second.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Seeing none, called a question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Traffic light replacement. Director Wilkinson?
Okay, so this is for a traffic signal fixture replacement at Government Road and First Avenue North. The traffic signal fixtures at the intersection of Government Road and First Avenue North require replacement due to the aging infrastructure. SAS Power currently owns the underground power supply from the traffic controller to the streetlights, which requires replacement due to its current condition. The city of Waburn plans to replace the underground power supply and install conduit. The budget for this traffic light replacement project is $120,000 and includes a purchase, delivery, and installation of all new infrastructure associated with the traffic signals. City has already purchased a new traffic controller, new traffic signal, and streetlight infrastructure, but requires a contractor for the installation portion of the project. This includes installation of the new traffic signal infrastructure, including the traffic controller, replacement of the corresponding underground power supply, and new foundations for the poles. So on April 11th, a request for proposal was posted on SAS Tenders on the city website. Quotations were to be received by May 3rd at 12:00 PM, and a total of two proposals were received. You can see the bids below, and they do include the taxes. Proposal submitted reviewed to ensure bidders understood the scope of work involved, had similar project experience, the required qualifications, and to ensure the project delivery schedule could be met. Both of the proposals met the full requirements, with industrial electric holding the lowest bid of $76,796.75. It is recommended that the 2022 traffic signal fixture replacement on Government Road and First Avenue North be awarded to industrial electric and instrumentation, as per the costs detailed in their bid and the conditions stipulated in the RFP.
Do you have a motion, please?
Your worship, I would move that the bid of Industrial Electric and Instrumentation Limited for the supply and installation of a traffic signal fixture on Government Road and First Avenue North in the amount of $76,796.75 be accepted.
I'll second that, your worship.
Questions? I just, Jennifer, I just find it's what's happening with so many of our tenders, that is a widespread between the two tenders. And why? What's the difference are? What do you see that, why they're such a widespread? Is it just gouging on Albright's part, or is it somebody?
Well, one is a local contractor to Waburn, and the other one is not, so, you know, they would probably have more mobilization costs versus an industrial electric. They're not going to have to pay to bring workers down to Waburn. Albright's not from Waburn, so I think that would factor in, is they might have some more overhead expense to, you know, work within this area, whereas industrial electric wouldn't have that. Industrial electric does have a lot of experience with our traffic lights as well, so they would know the project probably the best, and they do the current fixes on them, as well as they also have the contract at Surris. And third, is it? Yeah. Anyway, so they have that one as well, so. Surris, I'm second, sorry.
Is your plan to have this work done this year?
Yeah, the plan is to have it done this year, yeah. That's in the schedule. And the delay on the previous one was due to the poles arriving, and we actually, these poles are a lot quicker to get, because they're not the... poles are a lot quicker to get, because they're not the black fancier ones for the downtown.
Mr. Van Betchu.
I hope they do, Council Mickel, because I've found myself standing, or stopped at that red light the last few days, waiting for it to turn to green. So, it saved me a lot of time during the day as soon as I get those lights changed.
No.
Call the question, all in favor, carried unanimously. Library board appointments, city clerk, Richter.
Thanks, your worship. We've received an email from chairman of the Waverne Public Library Board, Jan Stadel, sorry, to appoint two new board members to the, to the board. The names of the new appointees are Patty Crasweller and Tom Allen. And if council so chooses, they can appoint them tonight.
Do you have a motion, please?
Your worship, I'd like to make the motion that the following be and are hereby appointed to the Waverne Public Library Board for the remainder of 2022, Patty Crasweller and Tom Allen.
Second.
I'll second that.
Call the question, all in favor, carried unanimously. Introduction of bylaws, bylaw 2022-3442, community plan amendment. Development officer, Pletcher.
Yep. So, city council approved the city's new official community plan and zoning bylaw in October of 2020. Both bylaws were required to be submitted to the province for approval from the Ministry of Government Relations, and that's required by the Planning and Development Act. In December, both bylaws received ministerial approval based on several conditions that would require amendments to the bylaws be made by October of last year. Council approved the general amendments to the OCP and zoning bylaws in October, and they were subsequently submitted to the Ministry of Government Relations for approval. A letter was received in December notifying the city that the OCP amending bylaw was approved in part, except for two policies. Both policies relate to the floodway and excavation within the floodway. The province has advised the policies are not consistent with the statements of provincial interest, and they must be amended to comply with the ministry's decision. Council gave first reading to the bylaw on April 11th. Upon first reading of the bylaw, the public notice was advertised in accordance with our public notice policy for the public hearing to occur today. So, the summary of proposed amendments, the conditions were policy 3.6.6 and 3.7.8 must be amended to align with the statements of provincial interest, which prohibit development of buildings and additions in the floodway. The previous wording was excavation and or fill within the floodway should be discouraged. However, prior to filling lands within the floodway, there should be consultation with the Water Security Agency to determine whether it shall be permitted. New proposed wording would be excavation and or fill within the floodway shall be prohibited. Staff have reviewed the required conditions of ministerial approval included within the letter from the minister, and believe that the conditions have been addressed. Upon speaking with the province's community planning branch, the OCP should not contemplate changing the grades of properties within the floodway as it alters the flow of floodwaters. The proposed wording is consistent with the SPIs, which prohibit development in the floodway. Staff are recommending that council proceed with a second and third reading of this amendment to comply with the ministerial approval. The Waverne District Planning Commission reviewed this bylaw amendment at their April 22nd meeting, and no concerns were expressed by the commission, and the letter has been attached to the report. So, OCP amendments require approval by the Ministry of Government Relations, and upon final reading of this bylaw, they will be submitted to the province for approval. So, council's options would be option number one, to hold the public hearing for bylaw 2022-3442, and then give second and third reading to the bylaw, being a bylaw to amend the official community plan policies 3.6.6 and 3.7.8, and council directs administration to submit the bylaw for approval by the minister. Option number two would be council refuse to give second reading to the bylaw and direct administration to revise the proposed bylaw. The reason for their refusal would have to be given. Option number one would be the staff recommendation that council holds the public hearing tonight and gives second and third reading to the bylaw to amend the official community plan as mentioned.
In the opposition to going ahead with second reading, before we do, prior to doing the second reading, the advise the public hearing for bylaw 2022-3442 is declared open, and invite any parties wishing to speak regarding the bylaw, we do so now at this time. Last call for submissions. And seeing no submissions, declare the public hearing closed. So, council, we can proceed for the second and third readings. Go ahead.
Your worship, I would move that bylaw 2022-3442, being a bylaw to amend the official community plan bylaw 2020-3411, for the purpose of amending official community plan policies 3.6.6 and 3.7.8, be given the second reading.
Second.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion. Call the question, all in favor, carried unanimously. Go ahead.
Your worship, I would move that bylaw 2022-3442, being a bylaw to amend the official community plan bylaw 2020-3411, for the purpose of amending official community plan policies 3.6.6 and 3.7.8, be read a third time and passed.
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Call the question, all in favor, carried unanimously. Last reading? Oh, that was, okay. I thought we had to do, okay, approval to do a final reading. Okay, and so it is passed unanimously. Moving forward, 2022-3445, amendment to the cemetery bylaw, Mr. Crowe.
Thank you, your worship. So, fees for the Hillcrest Cemetery are set following a three-year rate review cycle. Our current rates expire on December 31st, 2022, with the most recent review being conducted back in 2019. An update to the fee schedule included in the bylaw is proposed with an annual rate increase on services taking effect on January 1st, 2023. So, the Parks Division of the Leisure Services Department has conducted a comparative analysis between current cemetery rates and those charged by numerous other communities. Following this review, along with forecasting future operational costs, it's been determined that increases over the next three years are required to ensure that the cemetery remains sustainable, limiting its reliance on revenues earned through taxation to cover expenses. Although rate increases are proposed, the city continues to offer cemetery services at a very affordable rate and remains relatively inexpensive in comparison to other communities. So, you'll see attached to my report is a very thorough report that Parks manager Kurt Block put together for information purposes. But following review of that report, and with his recommendation, I am recommending that, following the extensive process that we've gone through, that bylaw number 2005-3061, respecting the operations of Hillcrest Cemetery, be amended to include the proposed 2023 to 2025 fee schedule.
Your worship, I'd like to make a motion that bylaw 2022-3445, a bylaw to amend bylaw 2005-3061, the bylaw respecting the operation of Hillcrest Cemetery, to allow for a new rate schedule be read a first time.
Do I second it?
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Discussion. Call the question, all in favor, carried unanimously.
Your worship, I'd like to make a motion that bylaw 2022-3445, a bylaw to amend bylaw 2005-3061, the bylaw respecting the operation of Hillcrest Cemetery, to allow for a new rate schedule be read a second time.
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Seeing none, call the question, all in favor, carried unanimously. Next.
Your worship, a motion that bylaw 2022-3445, a bylaw to amend bylaw 2005-3061, the bylaw respecting the operation of Hillcrest Cemetery, to allow for a new rate schedule, be given three readings at this meeting.
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Call the question, all in favor, carried unanimously.
Your worship, a motion that bylaw 2022-3445, a bylaw to amend bylaw 2005-3061, the bylaw respecting the operation of Hillcrest Cemetery, to allow for a new rate schedule, be read a third time and passed.
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Call the question, all in favor, passed unanimously. New rates are set for the Hillcrest Cemetery. Unfinished business, Fido's Place Request, Vilmann Officer, Pletcher.
So, in 2018, a contract zone was approved by city council for 325 Queen Street to allow Cindy Anne to develop Fido's Place Doggy Daycare and Training Center. The existing highway commercial zoning of the property did not allow for a kennel, so the contract zone allowed for that use as a permitted use. A contract zone is a type of rezoning, which requires that a contract agreement be entered into between the city and the property owner and the tenant in this scenario, to allow for specific uses under regulations that do not apply in the original zoning of the property. That contract agreement is then registered on the title of the property. The contract zone was approved by council, and the agreement was for a three-year time period with an expiry date of December 31st of 2021. Based on information from when the contract was originally approved, the three-year timeframe was assigned due to the term of Cindy's lease being for three years. In March 2022, Cindy Anne contacted the city about the expired contract, at which point she was advised that the contract could not be extended, because it was expired and is no longer valid. Additionally, the new zoning bylaw and official community plan have been approved since the contract zone was initially approved. So, any new zoning bylaw amendments would have to be evaluated under the current bylaws in effect. Cindy Anne was advised that she would be required to go through the zoning bylaw amendment process for a new contract zone to be approved. She advised that she would request a waiver of fees from city council before initiating that process. A letter has been submitted to council with that request, and council reviewed the letter at the regular council meeting on April 25th, and decided to table the item for the next council meeting to allow staff to investigate options for waiving the fee. Schedule A of the Planning Fees Bylaw sets out all of the fees for planning applications. The fees for a contract zone are $1,150 plus advertising costs. The bylaw doesn't contain a provision for waiving application fees, and staff have researched whether planning application fees have been waived previously and cannot find any examples of fee waivers being approved. Given that the bylaw doesn't contain, does not have the provision for waiving fees, staff would recommend that council deny the request to waive the application fees. Staff have looked into options for reducing future costs to the applicant, and have determined that once a contract zone is requested, that contract agreement could contain provisions for the contract zone to be valid as long as Fido's Doggy Daycare is operating at that location, as long as the property owners agree to those terms as well.
Go ahead.
Your worship, I have a motion that the request of Cindy Anne Bone, Fido's Place, for the waiving of the fees for a zoning bylaw amendment to allow for a contract zone at 325 King Street be denied.
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Discussion.
Thank you, worship. Thanks, Janine. A couple of points I want to raise this evening, that I'm aware of and the public is aware of, too. The major concern I have on this issue is that the October 20th, or 2020, of the OCP had some bearing with the $1,150, and that is not the case. Is that correct? The reason why there's an $1,150 charge is because there was delinquency of the current agreement to where it's actually is today. Is that the truth?
That's correct.
So, I guess, as a counselor, once we start playing with, with these fees with people, it's a never-ending battle. Cindy, I'd like to help you out on this, but it's a tough call, because I think you mentioned it last time, that you neglected to hit the thing on target, and those fees are there. It has nothing to do with our official community plan that was approved in 2020. So, that sort of clears the agenda there. So, let's see what happens.
Mel, anything? And I guess the, the point being is that, that $1,150 is a fee to, for advertising and, and getting this, it's like you're starting brand new again, correct?
Yeah, the $1,150 are, are fees are set based on staff time and resources of preparing those bylaw amendments.
Right. And, and, but this time, the contract will be different, that is, it is, so long as, so long as it's there, that there is no, it'll be for, never-ending, so long as, as she's holding the contract, correct?
Correct.
Which it won't be a three-year contract now, it will be a never-ending one.
Yeah, as long as the property owner is okay with that, yes.
And again, if we do not have, within our bylaw, the power to waive fees, correct?
That's correct.
That being, that being said, any other questions? So, go ahead, just go ahead and speak.
Hi, thank you very much for hearing me. I just want clarification on the amount again, please, because I went, and I respect and I appreciate everything you guys have done. My question would be, if I wouldn't have found it and come to you with it, how long would it have taken for somebody to say, oops, it had expired? Which I'm sure you guys would have found it eventually, so I'm not saying I would have got away with anything. My question is, so I did go and I filled out the form, because I knew I was going to have to. And that wasn't the question, the question was the fees. That's a lot of money for a small business to do again. When I'm filling out the form, it says that it's only $950 plus advertising, so where is the extra money coming from?
Because it's a contract zone, our schedule has that as a separate fee.
Okay.
Yeah.
And is that, like, that's not on here, though? Like, the form I took off your website, it's not on there?
Believe, we have a separate form for it.
Okay. I just went to the zoning bylaw amendment form, which I thought is what I had to fill out.
Which one is it, Janine?
We have a separate form for contract zones, because they're not a typical zoning bylaw amendment. So, it's $1,150, that's what the bylaw says.
So, did you, okay, so then I guess you'd have to provide with the proper form.
Well, I'm sure we'll have a nice meeting about everything I need to get done. I was just reading that, and that said that I had to do the zoning bylaw amendment, and that's what I did, so.
Go ahead, Mel.
I just wonder, point this to the city manager, if, if we have the ability to spread payment out over a little while, to give her a little bit of extra time to make payments on it, if, or if it has to be a one-time thing, if we can do the contract zone and put in.
I don't think we've done that in the past, Council Van Betchu. I think it's just a one-time payment. We, I don't think we've ever had stuff that there's a payment plan back for that.
Like, I'm not talking over a long period, but even just, but.
Yeah, because I know all our, all our applications, it's been the payment for that process to start, right? By doing a, a payment plan, it goes away from the purpose. Yeah, because it's usually you have to pay for that, for that process to, to.
To happen, okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
So, my next question would be, I can't afford this right now, so what happens? Can I close?
That would mean she would be in contravention of the zoning bylaw, so we'd have to look at action through that.
How much time are you talking?
A month.
That's a discussion that they can, Cindy Anne can provide when she does sit down with, with Janine, to go through the, the contract, and the timing for that contract and the process for that contract.
Yep.
Because there was a, a comment by Cindy Anne that she will be sitting down with Janine, they can have that discussion at that time, go through that.
Okay.
The best we can do is off your never-ending contract, so this will never happen again.
Right, and we had discussed that when we first talked as well.
As opposed to, I'm not quite sure where the three-year came in before, it was a, you know, again, I'm not a part of that, of the.
That was actually approved by council for the contract zone.
All right.
So, then that went through council in 2018.
No, I, yeah, I know it is approved, but I'm just saying is, why the three-year block came, or where that came from, as opposed to a never-ending?
The three years came from the fact that it was a lease, and we typically do contracts with the property. with the property owner because they own the property.
Okay.
So we don't authorize things that the property owner doesn't authorize. So she had a three-year lease, so that's what we had to follow.
Okay, so then, that's where all that comes in. So I just want to make sure that you clarified, you understand, and we're kind of, our hands are very bound with this, the way the bylaw is set up and everything, I thought. So then a call to question, I guess the motion is that we deny this application for the waiver of fees. All in favor? Carry on that one. But, at the same time, there's the, there's the option of the never-ending lease, and sitting down and talking to these and figuring out how we're going to make sure that we get through everything onto all that stuff.
Okay, thank you very much for everything.
All right, thank you. Development permit discretionary use greenhouse.
So we've received a discretionary use development from an application from John Holbert Construction for a new greenhouse building that will be accessory to the existing retail store at 1240 Sims Avenue. The site is currently zoned highway commercial and a retail store, a store over 500 square meters is considered discretionary use in that zone. Additionally, a greenhouse is a discretionary use. The applicant is proposing to build an approximately 2,800 square foot building for the purposes of an accessory greenhouse to the existing Canadian Tire store. The subject property is located at the corner of Sims Avenue and Grace Street, and the building is proposed to be in the northwest corner of the property. I've included a map of the aerial imagery of where it will be approximately located and a screenshot of the zoning bylaw. And then there is the site plan, which shows where it will be located on the property and the parking spaces that they'll be removing, and then I've included a closer detail of it, just because it's very hard to read. And the setbacks are quite significant still from the road at about, close to 32 meters from the property line in the front there. I believe they are removing 21 stalls to accommodate the new building, but they will still be compliant with what's required for the site. And then the building section, which shows what it will look like approximately. So as a discretionary use, a neighborhood notice was sent to all residents of the 75-meter radius of the property, notifies of the application and the opportunity to provide their concerns and feedback to council. Notices were sent out on April 26th, and no comments or concerns have been received. The official community plan sets out policies and objectives for the highway commercial land use designation, which applies to the property, and it's intended to accommodate a range of convenience establishments, including but not limited to gas stations, vehicle sales restaurants, vehicle repair shops, strip malls, and uses for the traveling public. These areas are designed to accommodate the needs of commercial businesses, which require or strongly benefit from highway access and require significant amounts of land, and the proposal is consistent with the OCP policies. The highway commercial zone is designed to provide for the development of uses serving the traveling public or requiring a high level of accessibility. The proposal is for a 2,800 square foot greenhouse building, which will be accessory to the existing retail store. It's proposed to meet all required setbacks and floor area ratio for the site. The site has 146 parking spaces currently with 21 proposed to be removed to accommodate the new greenhouse, for a total of 125 parking spaces, which meets the requirements of the zoning bylaw. The proposed building complies with the maximum height, maximum floor area ratio, and minimum setbacks. The off-site development levies would be applied to the building as per bylaw 2018-3388. Water and sewer would not apply because the building will not be serviced with water and sewer, so therefore the off-site development levies will be $2,520 for the building and would be condition of the development permit approval. So council's options would be to approve development permit 2022.016 for an accessory greenhouse building at 1240 Sims Avenue without further conditions. Or option number two would be to approve the development permit for a greenhouse building at 1240 Sims Avenue, subject to the following conditions: minimum of 106 off-street parking spaces shall be provided on-site; parking areas must be maintained as dust-free gravel or hard-surfaced; off-site development levies totaling $2,520 shall be due upon development permit issuance, and the building permit shall be required, and a city of Weyburn business license shall be obtained. Option number three would be to refuse the development permit, and the reasons for refusal would have to be provided tonight. So staff recommendation, the development permit application meets the requirements of the zoning bylaw in terms of use, parking height, and building setbacks, and therefore staff are recommending option number two, to approve the development permit with the conditions listed.
Do I have a motion?
Your worship, I have a motion that the discretionary use development permit 2022-016 from Braden Schatz for an accessory greenhouse building at 1240 Sims Avenue be approved, subject to the conditions as presented.
Second.
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
The question I have, Janine, I know that there is not directly water being put, you know, ducked, but the purpose of the development fee is kind of for, I guess it's the water usage, the extra usage being put on our system onto that. With that size of greenhouse and watering all the flowers, I know we're paying, he'll be paying for water, city water, but it's also, it's going to use a lot of water on that. Is that, is that, I, not questioning any of your thought process at all in there, but is that not, isn't there extra usage on our water because of the size of the greenhouse? Because you're putting a lot of water into that greenhouse.
Yeah, so Canadian Tire has previously had a greenhouse space on the property. They just recently enclosed it to be a four-season space, so this will replace that, so it will be relatively the same usage, and they're not proposing any additional connections to the water.
Okay, that's what, that's what I was wondering about. So it's just kind of an upgrade to their existing conditions, okay? And that's why we're not going more than that, so, okay. I thought this was kind of like a completely new and expanded area. Go ahead.
Not a big question, more a curiosity. So the business license requirement, I'm not following that.
That's just a standard requirement we put on all our development.
All right.
Further questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Carry unanimously. Parks and leisure rates. Parks and recreation, I guess.
All right, so the Leisure Services Department, along with the Parks and Leisure Services Commission, completes a thorough user fee and rate review every three years to ensure that community access to our leisure services is offered in both an affordable and a sustainable manner. Following an intensive process and multiple reviews, rates for the 2022 to 25 operating season have been developed, and if adopted by city council, would take effect as of September 1st, 2022. So these proposed rates have been developed throughout a process which factors in the following criteria: operational cost estimates, cost recovery analysis, comparative cost analysis, and community expectations. So throughout the development of the proposed rate structure, several factors were taken into consideration to ensure that leisure services operations remain both accessible and sustainable while following the City of Weyburn Leisure Services 50% cost recovery mandate that's in place. In general, there are proposed increases for all pay-to-use services being offered by the Leisure Services Department. These increases were held to be as minimal as possible, and it is important to note that in comparison with other cities and towns in Saskatchewan, the City of Weyburn remains one of the most affordable locations to access leisure facilities. The proposed user fees are unfortunately required to operate our facilities to address the constant increase to inflation, energy, and supply costs. The Leisure Services Department is constantly seeking funding opportunities and is dedicated to finding operational efficiencies to limit our deficits and keep our user access affordable. So just some highlights from the rates that we are proposing. So one of the big ones that came to us a little bit late in the game here is the Provincial Sales Tax Act has been modified, so now we are required to charge PST on many of our, many of our rates. So effective October 1st, 2022, PST will apply to the total charge for taxable admissions, entertainment, and recreation in relation to a place or facility or seminar, activity, or event in Saskatchewan. PST must be collected on admissions, fees, participation fees, activity fees, membership fees, administration, and service fees. So to reflect the changes as implemented by the Government of Saskatchewan Tax Act, an additional 6% is needed to be included to our rates going forward. All proposed leisure service fees that you will see on the rate structure attached to this report include both the GST and the PST where it is applicable, so the rates shown will be the actual amounts charged at the time of registration or admission to the facility. Another thing we focus on with our facilities, in effort to provide equal opportunity to all users, our drop-in rates, our membership fees, and hourly rental costs, are held as consistent as possible throughout the facility so that we aren't treating anybody differently, if we can avoid covering those, those costs that way. One other thing we want to add this year is a daily super pass option, so to provide more affordable access to the community and to encourage individuals to get active and utilize all of our facilities, we're proposing a new category for our daily access rates beginning in 2022. So the daily super pass rate will provide individuals or families the ability to purchase a one-day pass to participate in as many leisure opportunities as they wish. So, for example, the Smith family could stop in at the pool at 9:00 AM, purchase a daily super fa, super pass, they could go for a swim, go over to the Spark Center for a walk around the track, climb through the play structure, and then head back over to the pool for a hot tub if they want. One other highlight, the Leisure Services Department, we continue to seek funding opportunities and work with our local organizations and local companies who help us implement inclusive and welcoming programs and events to the entire community. We recognize and we aim to eliminate barriers, holding people back from participating in healthy sport culture and recreation services wherever possible. So just a few examples of what we can offer through our means and also some generous support from the community. We have $5 family programming events, $2 parent and tot swims. We have many free public swimming events throughout the year, free skating at the rinks, free access to our paddling pool and our spray parks. We have numerous outdoor parks and green spaces that are free to use to the, to the community, and of course, we have our free access available to the Credit Union Spark Center Outdoor Multi-Sport Rink. So following this process involving city staff, Parks and Leisure Services Commission members, I'd like to recommend that proposed 2022 to 2025 leisure services user rates be adopted by Weyburn City Council, with increases taking effect on September 1st, 2022.
Your worship, I'll make the motion that the recommendation of the Director of Leisure Services to approve the 2022 to 2025 Parks and Leisure Services rates and fees scheduled be accepted as presented.
Worship, I'll second that motion.
Questions? Go ahead.
Thank you, worship. Andrew, thank you. I know it's kind of a fine balance to keep everything affordable to the public, yet still maintain the quality of service. You have some great staff at all of your facilities, and we have some top-notch facilities for people to visit, so thank you for all of your hard work.
Mr. Mickle.
And again, echo what Councilor Marseta said, Andrew, thank you for what you've done. And over the years that I've been sitting in this chair, every time we have a leisure report, the question is, are you sure these families can afford it? And that still sticks in my mind. Maybe we should turn up the mics so the provincial government can hear that, and I'll say it because I'm serious. This is total nonsense. You try to respect your community and what you're doing for your public, your people, your families, to unite them, to keep it that they can be active, and maybe something should be said on the other end.
Mr. Mickle, this is, that was a long, deep discussion. What is coming in, what is coming forward in the next year to five years is going to be incredible that I think people are not going to see. It is not just a provincial, it is a federal problem, that we are not going to be able to discuss here or handle here at all. It is very unfortunate, but we're going to be into some very drastic times. So this is, this is looking forward to it. I think this is about as affordable as we can possibly make it. Thank you, Andrew, for this, and we will see where this takes us. Called question, everything, all in favor? Moving forward. The announcements, anything? Go ahead, Laura.
Your worship, thank you. Just wanted to remind everybody that it is Way Clean Week, despite the fact that it is raining and it's going to be scheduled to rain all week. I encourage you to get your rubber boots on and your spring jackets and go out and pick up garbage around the city of Weyburn. There's a few of us councillors that may have some prizes available, so if we catch you doing some good deeds, we may be able to give you some passes to some of our great facilities. So thank you to Jennifer and to Christine and the staff for putting all of their work into this, and you can check out all of the maps and stuff on weyburn.ca. There's also Way Clean Bingo, so I'm excited to play that as well.
Yes, let's move forward with our cleanup of Weyburn and working forward to it. Anything else? I have a couple announcements. The City of Weyburn has received a request from Kelly Scott, the Regional Representative of Fibromyalgia Association Canada, to light up City Hall in recognition of the 30th anniversary of Fibromyalgia Awareness Day on May 12th. There are 2% to 4% of Canadians living with Fibromyalgia in Canada, many of them right here in Saskatchewan. In consideration of this, on May 12th, City Hall will be lit up in purple to raise awareness of Fibromyalgia Awareness Day. The other second thing is that moving into, after May long weekend, first off, I know it's, I know it is our rival city. People say that it's not a rival city, but it is our rival city. Estevan, the Estevan Bruins took the cup for Saskatchewan. We are moving into the Centennial Cup. As Mr. Warren and I were discussing there with Councilor Mickle, this has expanded from five teams for the Centennial Cup to 10 teams. Now, I've been told, Estevan is just about completely booked up, people are going to be moving here. This, this week's coming up is going to be, during that time is going to be, Weyburn's going to see an overflow, the hotels should be seeing overflow, the businesses should be seeing overflow. I would ask that, or suggest that people from Weyburn go and see if they can get tickets because this is going to be some excellent, excellent junior hockey all the way down in Estevan, and we will show our support for our city down the highway, go down, enjoy some, some excellent hockey along the way. There are some young people from this area that were on the teams and going to it, and just go and show our support along the way. Gives you flashbacks to your time, does it? Anyway, we, okay, there. So that is, let us look forward to that and seeing some really excellent hockey along the way. That being said, any other things, announcements? No other announcements, then at this point in time, I'd like to call this meeting. Oh, pardon me, there are, last thing on, on the agenda, under there, there's no notice of motions, so this will move for adjournment. Meeting adjourned, thank you.